I was curious about that, if that's closed.
This meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education is now called to order. I'd ask everyone to please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I begin to have a resolution to read, it is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Tom Northstein as temporary Board Secretary for this meeting in accordance with NJSA 18A:16-1. Do I have a second? Go on, Armino. Any discussion?
Just congratulations.
Okay. We can vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, no nays. Congratulations, Mr. Northstein. You can now do the roll call.
Ms. Armino, Mr. Braverman, Mr. Mayo, Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Kalpanovic.
Here.
Myself, yes. Ms. Corino.
Here.
Mr. Iback.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Yeah.
Mr. Rutzke.
Here.
Mr. Board President, you have a quorum present tonight.
Thank you. Do you want to read the statement?
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted, May 13, 2016. Number one, at all schools; number two, at the Home News Tribune; number three, in the Cranberry Press; and number four, filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you, sir. This brings us to our first public forum. If anyone in the public would like to address the agenda, now's the time for them to come up. I don't see anyone from the public, therefore we can move to our presentation. Mary Gassman is our new New Jersey School Board Association rep, and she'll be talking to us on the superintendent's eval, board eval, board goals, and district goals. Ms. Gassman.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Very nice to be here. It's the first time I'm meeting you. I'm Mary Gassman, Field Service Representative, and I'm replacing Gwen Thornton. We have redistrict, so I now have Middlesex County, Hudson County, and a good portion of Ocean County. And I know I have very, very big shoes to fill. So, tonight we're going to do the evaluation process. Just talk about the process a little bit. You can move on. We'll talk about the legal requirements associated with the process. We'll talk about the process itself, outline the evaluation system, and talk about some of the effective strategies that are associated with evaluations. Okay. We can skip right over that. Okay, it is a legal requirement. The statute, 18A, requires that you do this once a year, if you've done it in writing.
Talk into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. I wonder. Just remind me.
Oh, I wonder.
Okay. Maybe if I read, I'll stay put. It's done once per year. It's done in writing. A copy is provided to the superintendent, and the board and the superintendent meet collectively, the full board, to discuss the findings of the evaluation. The evaluation is based on goals and the objectives of the district and responsibilities of the superintendent, the executive responsibilities of the soup. The evaluation is a summative document. It represents the majority of the board. You can go back just one second. There's the code. The evaluation of the chief school administrator is also addressed very specifically in the code, Title VI. Okay? Now we go. Okay, the entire process must complete by July 1st. That means that we have had to have all of the meetings, we have to have the summative document done, we have to have discussed it, and get signatures on by the 1st of July. So, we're in a little bit of a tight timeframe right now, because we're sitting on 18 March. No, we're not. 18 May. And then 10 days after, if there's something additional that should be added to the report, the superintendent may attach supporting documentation within 10 working days after the 1st of July. Okay? Questions on that? Okay, next. These are the ethical considerations. Do we have any conflicted members on this board? We do. How many? We have three conflicted members, and that means that there is some relative that is working in the district, so they are not permitted to participate in this particular process, the evaluation process. Okay? We can move from that. Those people, they understand, everyone knows their confliction. Individuals know their confliction.
I believe so. Ms. Corino and Mr. Kaufman's not here.
Okay, okay. Just so it's not a surprise, I wasn't sure of the attendance. Okay, we can go back to the, next is, which, I'm sorry. That basically, that we just talked about, that the process overview, it's communications, it's strategic goals, it's leadership, it's fiscal management, it's policy development. Okay? The cycle itself, you're starting your cycle in the April-May timeframe. Your CSA inputs to the cycle, and you complete the CSA evaluation, and then you move on. I can't see that. I'm sorry? Wait, boy?
Can we take one of the microphones? Should we allow Ms. Gassman to walk around? Like the microphone over there? And then you can walk around and you can see the show.
Stand up in the middle, please, just a microphone.
No, that's okay. That's okay, if I can get this out of here. Okay. All right?
There we go. Gives you some freedom.
Yeah, now I can see it. The glasses only help with reading. Then in April-May timeframe, the same timeframe, we're going to be doing the April-May, the board self-evaluation in that April-May timeframe. Then, once those are completed and everything has been delivered, we go into goal setting. And that, we do the district goals, we talk about the district goals, and we also talk about board goals, set our goals for the board for the coming year. From that, over the summer is usually a very, very good time for your administration to do the action plans. And then you've got to come up with a system of reporting out, having your superintendent report out to you the accomplishments and the status on those plans. Okay? And here we go. District goals. You know, the district goals address your program, your instructional program here, your staff, professional development, facilities, finance. Everyone owns district goals. The CSA is responsible for their completion. The board supplies the resources necessary for that achievement. Board, whoops, board goals. The board goals are dealing with board governance, your process, you know, operating as a board of education, and the procedures that you're using, how well are you governing. CSA goals, those are personal goals that the CSA can develop. Okay? Now, this is just a sample of an action plan, not just a visual. Okay? Next. The way we start the evaluation process, and I think most of you have already been through this process at least once or twice, so it's not new. You've already agreed on the evaluation tool. You use the tool for New Jersey school boards. Your evaluation calendar, we're talking about that tonight. Your superintendent's self-assessment, that'll be talked about tonight. The indicators of student progress, job description, conflicted board members. Okay? And this is the process calendar that we actually just addressed. The instrument has not changed in several years, although, news flash, there may be a change next year.
Question?
Yeah.
I've been asking school boards for a number of years to allow the superintendent access to the entire document. Right now, the superintendent gets to have a self-evaluation on the goal section only.
Yes.
And then there's this part two.
Yes.
That the board is asked to evaluate the superintendent on other factors. I would, I truly believe that the superintendent should also be able to provide the self-evaluation, which would provide data to help the board in their determination of whether or not I'm achieving those different areas.
That's right.
But I have no way to do that, because I'm locked out of that. Superintendents are locked out of that.
That is true. As of today, the only thing that the superintendent is reporting on are the goals.
But that's not, but I'm not being evaluated on.
They've been evaluating on more than that, the job description and those elements. There's a slide here that talks about the individual elements that the superintendent is evaluating on. That is one of the things that they're looking at. There's a whole committee that's working together on that. So, there may be more to come on that.
Okay. It's only been five or six years since I've been asking.
The wheels are progress. Yeah.
We currently use, and we've been using, the New Jersey School Boards tool. Are there any other tools that are available or that other districts use?
You, some districts use the same evaluation tools that they're using with their staff. I'm not familiar with those tools. Certainly, I can send the information back to you. Most of the districts throughout the state of New Jersey are using New Jersey school boards, because it's relatively easy, it's rolled together, it's compiled for you, you can see all of the evaluations on one document, and it can be timely, can be.
If we wanted to design our own, we could do that too, right? That would be.
As long as you, as long as it met the requirements, yes.
I think that would, in all due respect, I think we would have to work on that together.
Oh, absolutely.
I believe it's a cooperative process.
Absolutely.
And I would be open to that idea?
But it would be a little timely, not to be able to do it.
Oh, we're not doing it this year. Six years down the road, Cap.
That's a good point, Mrs.
No, and it's, that's a very difficult thing to do. Having done that in my previous life, that is not an easy job to run those.
I'm just concerned, because the last few times I did it, I felt that some of the items that we were looking at, it was very nebulous to me, and it wasn't really clear. And it just, I mean, this is, to me, one of the most important things that we do.
Yes.
This is the feedback to our super. And, you know, that, this is where we really, you know, keep that collaborative process going. And I just felt that some of the items on there didn't even pertain necessarily to our district sometimes.
Well, if, one of the things that I used to tell my board, but it was a smaller, a smaller board, however, it was that you, you're evaluating your law. You're not just in April and May suddenly evaluating your superintendent. You're doing that, you're noticing what's happening in your district, you're keeping track, your superintendent is reporting to you. And in some cases, now, some of the districts are, when you give your report, your superintendent's report at the meeting, you're linking that to the goals, so that the board is able to trace and see specifically how well those statuses are being reported. And the accomplishments, are you in trouble on one? You might be, and they might need to do something to assist in the achievement of that goal. So, it's not just that once a year that you're looking at it. And sometimes that helps to pull all of those elements together. If we move off of that district goals, because that's the part one, when you get into the executive leadership skills, part two, and that's a sample of it, you can pop up, I think there's this slide, yes, that one. Those are the six categories that you're looking at. General responsibilities, instructional leadership, personnel administration. And most of the time, you're removed from the personnel administration. So, it becomes difficult, right?
That's exactly right.
Yeah, yeah. But you can see it through many of the activities and non-activities, actually, that happen. Financial management, that you're reviewing closely. Chief Executive Officer, how well do they? And your community relations. Most of them. Once in a while, you'll come across an element where you're going to have an NA. What do they call it? Not observed, not observed. But I think that one of the things that they will be looking at is having more input from the superintendents. It helps. It helps the boards. It helps, it also helps spawn a discussion between your administration and your board.
Maybe we can speed up the timeline, because it's been five years already since we've been talking about.
I'll try.
Put Tom on the committee.
You know, I, that's an interesting suggestion. I don't know who's on that committee, but I will find out. I promise. I know Gwen would know. All right, next slide. Okay, this is part three, and this is, you know, what's super about your superintendent? What area would you like to see him put more emphasis? And what assistance should you be providing to ensure that he is successful? And that's an important one. You know, what can you do to assure that this is a successful operation? Board, no, I'm good. Board responsibilities. Once we deliver, you're going to send a rice notice to your soup, you're going to review and discuss a compilation document. That's the one that I'm going to deliver to you, once all of your board members have completed this. And you're going to probably have your board president or designate, develop a summary narrative, and that becomes the majority document. Now, notice that that says majority document. If you have some dissents, and one, one comment stands out above all else, that might be omitted from the summary document. However, that can be addressed when you have the final meeting with the superintendent to review the summative document. So, it's a majority, the majority of the board, majority of the comments. Okay? Okay. It's just a sample performance report. We usually, when we deliver, we provide a couple of samples of reports. I don't know, you probably have a particular format that you use to prepare the summative document for your superintendents. We give you a couple of samples, if you want to change off of that. Okay. This is the summary conference. This is where you're going to sit down with your superintendent and chat about all of the things that came back. It's legally advertised, 48 hours. There's a rice notice. This is done in closed session. The completed narrative, the summative document is shared, not the compiled document, the summative document. And you discuss, the full board has the discussion with the superintendent. And that's a time to chat and just work out.
So, based on that timeline, if the board is given access, which I'm assuming will happen sometime this week.
They have, yes.
They received it already?
Once you complete, once you complete the goals, the update of the goals in the tool.
I don't have access to the tool yet.
You, yeah, through the link. You should.
Usually, I'm sending an email with the.
Yeah. They were supposed to have gone out. Now, I'm getting reports from districts that they did not go, that they did not receive it. I will send that to you tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Yeah, because as of.
It's on the website, you just, it's.
Right.
You can scroll down on the website, but I will send it to you, so you have it.
Okay. Right, but in order to gain, it's not just, I can get the form on the website, but in order to get to the Monroe Township part, that would require a certain password, I would think.
Well, you have your standard login. Your BA should have all of that, the standard login, which is your email address.
Right.
And your password.
Okay.
All right. And I'll also give you the call center. In fact, I can have them send you your password if you do not have it. Okay, okay.
There was, there was an issue where they, they had my, had an old email address at school boards.
Okay.
And I just went, made sure I was on the list.
All right. We've had, we have changed, you'll see that the website has changed, I'll show you that in just a minute, and we have had some issues when they made the changeover. So, I'm not exactly certain what happened this year, because the emails are supposed to go out automatically, as soon as your superintendent completes the goals, hits the complete, or the, I think it's a submit button. As soon as that happens, each and every board member should receive an email that says, "Jump right in and go ahead and start." And now I'm hearing, this is maybe the fourth board this week that I'm hearing, they did not receive anything, so.
Okay, so as soon as I get that, assuming I get that tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
I will load the goals into the document as well as my self-evaluation.
Right.
Okay, so that might take a couple days.
Right.
By, let's say, Monday.
Right.
The board receives that, and I'm assuming that the conflicted members will be, the school boards control that?
No, that's local control.
That's local control. So, who has access to the local control?
They, they will have access to the tool. They can get to the tool.
They just don't have to complete it.
They just won't complete it.
Okay. Okay, all right.
That also is being marked, so that we can.
Okay. So, assuming that the board receives this by Monday, and really, it should be completed before our June board meeting, if this has to be done by June 30th. Our June board meeting is maybe June 11th, June 15th, somewhere around there.
Right.
And sent to me before that meeting, like a couple days before, and then we would discuss it at the June board meeting in closed session.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, in between there, there has to be a meeting of the board to discuss the compiled document. The board meets to discuss the compiled document.
Okay, but there's, there aren't any board meetings between now and the June meeting, and then.
Yeah, we'd have to create a special meeting.
We'll call a special meeting. Okay.
It's.
Did you?
We'll call a special meeting.
Okay, okay.
We did that for this one.
It's the timing, and I think it would be better to start up earlier, although, that's an issue as well, because if you start too early, you're too far ahead of goal completion.
That's exactly right.
So, you're, it's a crunch point.
Right.
For all districts.
Right.
To complete this by the 30th of June. A district just suggested the other night, could we push it to 1 September? Eh, well, then we run into other problems, so.
Right, right, exactly. So, I was bringing that.
Here's what it is, right now.
I was bringing that timeline up, kind of a not-so-tactful, friendly reminder that once you have access to, please.
Jump on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Northstein, sir, for getting right to the point.
And I tell you, I've been trying to turn it around in 24 hours. I can't guarantee that I can continue to do that, because now everyone's panicking, because they don't have theirs done. But I'm trying to do that, trying to run the reports and assemble them, and then just do a delivery process, getting out to the boards, because I do know that you're under a time constraint, so. Okay? Everybody knows, got to hurry up and get it done. Next one.
Is, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Is there a possibility to do it offline, paper copy, and have that submitted in that format for selected board members? If a board member should so choose to want to do it on paper as opposed to doing it electronically?
Yes. I do have someone that can enter the data. We don't recommend it, you know, obviously, but, but some people just, yes, we can do that. Okay. This is our Ready, Set, Go slide. So, we just did a pep on Ready, Set, Go. That's what, I don't know if any, has anyone been on the new website? What'd you think?
Big difference compared to what it was.
Yeah, yeah, there's improvements on it. We're still, and they're still going to continue working on it, but I thought that was an excellent foundation. They cleaned it, so that it's crisper than it was before. You're going to go to our services, select field services, next slide. You really think I can read that? And you're going to go online evaluations, next slide. And then board self-eval, which we'll talk about in a minute, and you just click that little blue line there under superintendent evaluation, and it takes you to the old form. Okay? But you do need your email login and password. You will need that. Okay? So, if you don't have it, just please let us know. Okay. And I'm sure I don't have to remind you that this is a highly confidential process. We purge, we will purge the compilation from our system as soon as you have completed your summative document. We keep no record of it. It's securely delivered by the FSR as of right now. We are looking at methods, we have a pilot going on right now, of electronically delivering. But because of the confidentiality, we are very cautious about an electronic delivery on this. Member assistance, we have a call center, and your FSR, that'd be me, is available to help at 24/7, actually, so. Because you have to work on it at night, or weekends. We're there for you, if you need it, so.
Hi.
Sorry I'm late.
No. Okay, next. The board self-eval. This is where you evaluate yourselves. Why do we want to, why would we want to run a board self-eval? What are your thoughts on board self-eval? It's a good, it's an excellent method to improve governance and management, and my director will tell you that student achievement is directly related to the level of board So, results used to develop future board goals. You know, the results of your board self-eval will roll you into that continuous process improvement. I don't know if we have any software folks, but in the world of software, you always talk about process improvement, continual process improvement. That's what you're doing right there. And it's a best practice. We always look at what we do, see how well we're doing it, how could we do it better? Okay, how? How do we, how do we evaluate ourselves? Well, we do it just about the same way as we do the CSA evaluation. And boards do, and the CSA, and your business administrator may also include input, and may also evaluate the board, because they're part of the team. Yes.
Conflicted board members participate?
Yes, yes. The confliction is because of the chain of command, and that the relative falls in line with the superintendent's chain of command. But this, no, conflicted members, absolutely, part of the board. Two components to evaluate is the board and the individual. And this one, when you're commenting, you'll see the two sections. It's how well do I do, how well is the board on whole doing in this category? And then you rate yourself, how well am I doing? And big surprise. We all think we're doing it great, they're the ones that don't do it, right? So, it's always fun to deliver that and deal with that a little bit. Determines the priorities and evaluation in nine areas of board governance. We do, the FSR does the compilation. That, we deliver. We go over the results with you. We talk about the results, make recommendations for the coming year. So, it's a very, very healthy document. Now, I will hasten to say, this is not required by law, but again, it's a best practice. We strongly recommend that you do this. This is. This is the same form that you've seen many times before. And I, I know that Monroe has, has always done the board self-eval. At least for several years, I know Gwen has...
Is this also due by June 30th? Or there's no timeframe on it?
There's no timeframe on it, but it's helpful. Because remember, it supports that goal-setting process, which we'll talk about in just a couple of minutes. But as long as it's supporting the goals, you really should probably do it at the same time. It's just easier.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to say there's no timeframe, but, you know.
Well, you're, you're absolutely right.
I mean, I know one of our board goals that we came up with last, in, in the summer of last year was a hundred percent participation in the board self-eval. So I think it would be incumbent upon us to try to have that done before we set new goals.
That's a very good suggestion, yes. And I did see that, that, that was part of the, the board goals for last year. So, okay. Just more of the form. Okay. Strategies, we'll quickly go through this. Collaboratively set district goals on an annual basis. I know you do that. We'll begin that process tonight. We won't complete, but we will start talking about that tonight. Develop a calendar for the evaluation process. And like I said, I would recommend that next year we start just a little bit earlier. Because you'll find yourself in less of a time crunch, you know? And everybody's busy and all these special meetings can make you... Next. Schedule periodic updates of progress through the year. And that I talked a little bit about earlier. Don't wait until May 15th to begin thinking about the evaluation. You're going to have your, your suit give you periodic updates throughout the year. Okay, develop a system to keep the board apprised, and that's what you're going to do with your suit. Okay. This was a suggestion, and this actually is coming forward tonight. CSA provide the board with a self-assessment prior to entering the progress toward district goals on Part One of the Evaluation Instrument. Okay? Questions? I know I flipped through that very quickly.
Hate to be asking all these questions, but... So in Part One, where I do the self-eval, is there space to upload documents that could relate to Part Two?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, but I, in the email that I send you tomorrow, I will let you know. I, I tried the other day, I wanted to go in and look at the form so I was familiar with what you were going to be seeing, and I couldn't get into it. So let me talk with the call center tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I guess on developing that timeline, after Dr. Kozak does his self-eval, then the, then we can do it. We'll get the link to do the, do, do his evaluation. And then after that, how long do, does it take for you to do a compilation document? So then we can call our special meeting and have a summary document?
I, I'm trying to do it within 24 hours. Most of the time I can, most of the time I can do it. The schedules are, are a little bit tight, but you're just a neighbor. I'm in Monmouth County, so it's easy for me to get to you, so...
Basically, it would, maybe our board president then should set maybe, you know, once Dr. Kozak completes, give the board a date certain that their need, that they have to do their evals of the super so that then we can schedule that meeting, I would imagine, correct?
Yes, yeah, recommend that.
Just like, what I'm hearing, I, I, and just have to underscore the importance of everyone getting those evals in as soon as possible so that we can get this date.
I'll also watch, because the system has been pretty good about notifying me when the superintendent has completed. So I'll keep an eye. I'm trying to track the emails that are coming into the districts so that I know if I see zeros a day after the, the superintendent has submitted the reports, then I'll let Steve know that we need to encourage people to go back on. It's, I know it's a busy time. I, I was, when I was waiting to come in, I'm watching the parking lot. You know, there's so much going on in school districts right now that this is just one more thing. But it really needs to be done.
So if our president gives a date certain, and then if, if everybody's not in at that point, then we just go with what we have, correct?
Don't like to, don't like to. If, if we've tried a couple of times and we can't get it, then we have to.
Is there a legal requirement to have a certain amount of members of the board doing the eval?
I'm, I don't know. I'm not going to give you a bad answer. I'm not sure on that. I'm going to say that you have to have a, a quorum. But I'll verify that. Okay, I'll get it back to you, Steve. Okay. Okay. I think if there's no further questions on that, we can go to the goal setting presentation.
The goals for this year yet, or do you need to wait?
You know, yeah, let's do that. You do the, the review for the goals, and then I'll do the, the goal-setting process. Because that really falls in line with the evaluation, so I think it would be better.
All right, so if I had access, I would have loaded this right up into the instrument. So, but I printed a copy. So all the board members have a printed copy. This is for your information. And I ask, respectfully ask that you keep these hard copies. And I will also provide it to you through Google Docs. But you keep the hard copy, and I respectfully ask that you use this when doing the evaluation. I try to provide as much information on this as possible. So you'll have, you'll have different forms to draw from when doing the evaluation. You'll have these two forms, the self-evaluation. Once I complete that, you'll have access to that. And if you need more information, I encourage you to just simply ask, and I can get more information to you if you need that. Okay, so... With that, okay, we're gonna switch over to the other presentation? Is it just, can I just extend now?
I'm guessing he's gonna use this one.
Yeah, this is on part of the... There we go. All right. So just need to go back to slide one. Okay, so the first, if you would look at, it's a PowerPoint slide or a Google slide, but same difference. Do it, doesn't have to be...
If you all have to.
No, it's not like...
Good for the public to have that.
No, I'm good, thanks.
F5, baby. I'm saying F5 will get it into the presentation. Maybe you can just work off the hard card copies. Dr. Kozak doesn't suggest it. If there's a problem, maybe we could just work off the hard copies. We can, but there's links on there, that's why I wanted to...
Here's your presentation.
Okay, but I can't advance slides. Oh, you mean if I just use the mouse and go from there?
Yeah. So you just use, as if you're, you're looking up here.
Okay.
What about downloading it as a PowerPoint and working from that?
Okay. So the first slide that you see is just district goals, end of year report. The, next, the overview are the three goals that were set last year. First one, goal number one was to develop and present a plan to the board for its approval that will address enrollment growth and facility needs, and to begin implementation of the board-approved plan. Goal two, expansion of two-way communication, et cetera. And goal three, can complete an external audit. I'm gonna move ahead, excuse me, just so that, because we'll, we'll go over each of those goals. So goal number one. After the goal was established back in the summer, last summer, it was July, I guess, of 2015, a steering committee was formed comprised of board members and administrat, and administrators in the fall of 2015 for the purpose of planning the process for addressing student enrollment group. The outcome from these meetings was to form an ad hoc committee comprised of community members and staff that would represent the various stakeholders in the community. It was also recommended to the board to hire an outside consultant to facilitate the community engagement meetings. In November and December of 2015, the ad hoc committee met for the purpose of becoming familiar with the facts regarding student enrollment group and its effect on the facilities in the district. In preparation for meeting with the larger community group, which was named the Student Advi, Student Growth Advisory Committee. The plan for enrollment growth, well, this is still part of goal one. Invitations to become a member of the Student Growth Advisory Committee were distributed to the community. Be the Falcon Flyer newsletters, invitations sent to the adult communities, and announcements at Board of Education meetings, Channel 28. There was a variety of different ways that we did that. The Student Growth Advisory Committee was formed and consists of members of the adult community, the staff, leadership team, town council, the police, recreation council, business community, parents, students, and other community members. January through March of 2016, the Student Growth Advisory Committee met each month and engaged in various activities to address both the short-term and long-term goals for addressing the student enrollment group. So just, all these meetings, as you know, are on the website. And this is just an example of one, one of those meetings, okay? And so our illustrious board president, starting off the meeting. And this one, I believe, was maybe from February or March. Well, this was also broadcast on Channel 28 to the community and is available on our website for anyone that would like to go. All of our meetings are on there. Mr. Ryback, respectfully, I'm going to shut you down here.
Do me a favor, didn't it?
So, okay, so let's go back to this, all right. In April, as you all know, we received new information from the township regarding additional housing units due to a ruling on affordable housing. And this, of course, required a new demographic report, which we are awaiting. We met with the Student Growth Advisory Committee on May 9th to apprise him of the new information and to discuss possible scenarios such as a possible referendum to build a new elementary school or schools in addition to the high school. The conclusion for this goal is that the goal of developing a plan to address enrollment group and facility needs was approaching, approaching completion. We were pretty, pretty close to being done when the new, new housing information came. With that new housing information, we had to kind of, you know, go back to the drawing board almost, you know? So we have that new demographic report that we're waiting. But even with that, if that comes in soon, we could, in fact, be, be, have achieved this goal by the end of June. The goal being that a plan or recommendation to the board would be made on how to address the student growth and the facility needs. And I think from the, the reports that you received from Mr. Ryback, you know, at each board meeting and through other means, the confidential reports each week, and, and other means, that I think everyone on the board at this point has a pretty good idea of where we are, where we stand with this. And, you know, I think by June we'll know. And because of the building that's going on pretty much every day in certain parts of town, the houses will be coming pretty soon. So, you know, to say the least, you know, I think we'll have to be expedient in how we address this. But the goal was to at least get the community group together, get everyone together, get, get a plan in place, get it started. And in my humble opinion, I think we have reached or, or achieved that goal. Short of, with the new information, we don't have all of it. But I'm confident that by the end of June, we should have all that information. And, you know, working within the control that we have. If they present new information to us in April, that's, was a little out of, out of our control. But we should be able to have that goal completed. Goal two was expansion of two-way communication with all stakeholders in the Monroe community, including but not limited to the, the utilization of constant contact, social media, and in-person meetings. And I'm just gonna flip through a couple of examples of ways that this was accomplished. So the Falcon Flyer is one that, you know, we started, ooh, July or August of last year. And it, it comes out monthly, and it includes a message from, from me, the superintendent. In every month, with every month's newsletter, I put information in there about the growth in the township to raise awareness of the student growth in addition to other things. Of course, our academic achievements that the students are achieving and our teachers are achieving, school events, a number of things. Links to videos, you know, lots of other, other information. Our website, links to that, Facebook, Twitter, the news, plenty of links on here to our schools and other events, calendars, sports events, the Monroe Education Insider, different, as I said, school events, pictures, you know, community events that are going on. There's a lot of information packed into this monthly newsletter. Congresswoman visiting Oak Tree School. And these newsletters are available on our website, you know, archived on the website. So anybody can access not only the present, but the, you know, the, the past newsletters as well. So that's one example. That's the, our monthly newsletter. And then we come up with the Falcon Express to, to put information out during the month that came up that was, we felt was relevant or very important. This one was, is one that we devoted to a sports edition. Something new this year to highlight the, the achievements of a lot of our sports teams. So at that time, it was ice hockey, bowling, baseball. Sportsmanship, one of our students, the, that, you know, received an award, was actually swimming. Videos on there and a lot of other information. Facebook, we started a Facebook account. And again, another way to distribute information, to push information out, people's phones, their mobile devices. So we have pictures, as you can see, of all different events. I think this was from, actually, last night. This was, that Dr. Alvek and I were at. And, you know, it's, we were both over there looking at the student artwork. And then we went over to the Honor Society induction. And at the end of the Honor Society induction, after all the kids were introduced and the thing concluded, Dr. Alvek pops up from her chair on the stage, she's waving it, she runs over and she snaps a picture. I said, "That's nice." She said, "What are you doing?" "Just go getting that out on Twitter." So we got it right out, immediately information. People have jumped on board, Dr. Alvek certainly one who is on board already, but I certainly appreciate that. Get that information out there. Again, information, all kinds of things about what's going on in the school, keeping the community apprised of all the wonderful things going on in the district. And my favorite, Twitter. Short, easy, quick way to get information out, links, so we have our Twitter. Here's one for the art teachers. Fifth graders help fight hunger. Create beautiful dashboards from your, you know, that's a promoted thing. But, you know, you can see there's just all different things for ways to get information out there, especially for... out there, especially for our parents and community members who work with everything off their phone, they can easily access it. And although it's not part of this presentation, and I wasn't going to announce it yet, Mr. Nostine, and I think you'll find this interesting in particular, we do have a district app that is, we're still reviewing in our administrative team, and I'm hope, I wanted to present it, but I want to wait till everyone's good with it, and I'll be very excited to show that to you maybe in June, okay? So, we have a Twitter account for our school occurrences, and some of our schools have their own Twitter accounts as well, and then we also have a Twitter athletics. So, tonight, if you heard my phone making little beeping noises, it was to let us know that our girls lacrosse won the game tonight and advanced, and our boys lacrosse, I think, won, it's on my phone.
They were going into the fourth at 13 to 2.
All right, we were getting updates, real-time updates. That's exciting to me. That's exciting, we get that information out there, and you don't have to be a member of Twitter to get that information, you all have to do is text 40404 and say, "Follow @MonroeAthletic" or "Follow @MTSDFalcons," and you'll get real-time updates as, you know, throughout the day, throughout the year. Okay, so that is, I just wanted to just show examples of how that goal was addressed. In addition, since July, I've attended over 30 events in the, at night and on weekend, not including daytime, but events during the evening, weekend, robotics competition here, different events, all different events, in addition to the events during the school day, and during those events, I met a lot of different people, and I've used that, I go out, one, because I want to see what's going on with the kids and what's going on in the district and the community, but also, it's an opportunity for me to listen to people. You know, very early on, if you remember, way back during the interview process, I said, "There's a reason why we have two ears and one mouth," right? So, we listen, or at least for me, I wanted to listen, and I wanted to hear input from the community, hear what they have to say. And so, I've had a chance to hear thoughts, concerns, suggestions, and at the same time, I've been able to use that opportunity to promote all the positive things that are occurring in the district, including our academics, our athletics, music and the arts, character building, et cetera, and raised awareness about the student group, which is the first step in the change process, you know, to raise awareness, and then there's, well, Cotter uses eight steps, different people use different steps, but it's all part of that change process. So, my conclusion on this is that this goal has been achieved, although improving communication will receive continued focus at all levels. And as I may have said to the board, I know I said it to the leadership team many times, you cannot over-communicate. So, we're always trying to improve our communication with all these goals. They're goals, we set them for the year, but I don't look at them as a stopgap, I look at them as continued. You know, we'll pick other goals to move forward, but these goals will continue. The third goal, to complete an external audit of the special education program from kindergarten through 12th, to ensure continued delivery of the highest quality services to meet the needs of our children in the most cost-effective and efficient manner possible. I won't read everything on there, but it basically talks about the timeline of when we went out and we received proposals from three different companies, reviewed the proposals, picked one particular company, public consulting group, PCG, recommended it, the board approved it, we proceeded, and we're continuing to proceed with weekly conference calls. Dr. Alvek, Ms. Ruela, Ms. Pepe, and a lot of other people, Mr. Gorski, everyone has been heavily involved, you know, this is every week, we get on a conference call, we, the collection of data was, I knew it was going to be a lot, but Mr. Washington, Reggie Washington, there was a lot of work that went on behind the scenes with collecting data, and that was all submitted electronically to PCG. They are using that data as well as February 23rd to the 25th, PCG came in and interviewed over 150 staff and parents in 45-minute segments, just morning, afternoon, and night, for three, well, two straight days, and then the third day, they used to do some interviews in the morning, and then they visited different programs throughout the school, throughout the district. And they have compiled that data, they're working on a report, and we expect the final report to be available to the board in June. And we'll have more information. Again, the goals go until June 30th, so I felt that this goal, should the report come in, which I expected to, would be complete. Additional information, this is why I'm asking you to keep these, please, and to please use this information when you're working on my evaluation. Just a couple of other things I just wanted to bring to your attention, and I want to really stress that anything I do in this district cannot be done effectively without the collaboration and the support of you as the Board of Education, Mr. Gorski, Dr. Alvek, Ms. Smith, Mary Smith, the leadership team, and the entire staff. So, I don't like using "I," I like saying "we," but I felt that there were some areas where I needed to put "I," so please, I do that respectfully, I'd rather use "we," I look at things as a team effort, a collective effort, so please excuse the word of, you know, of "I" using my name. A couple of things that I tried to do that I set as kind of informal goals would be, one of them was visibility throughout the district and the community. And I try to attend as many student and parent activities, visit classrooms, I was walking around the high school today, stopping in classrooms, talking to kids, I try to get into the schools and classrooms as much as I can, I can never get in there as much as I'd like to, because there's always something else going on, but I like to get in and ensure that there's two-way communication. It's what I called, well, I think it was the CEO of General Motors back in the 80s, 90s, his name escapes me, but I think it's his term, his phrase, management by walking around. And I think that's really important, that I get out and I talk to people in every single job, in every position, bus drivers, teachers, or custodians, or principals, assistant principals, and I really, and students, and hear from them, you know, what are you learning, how are you doing, what do you think, what can we do better? So, that's one thing. Another is, this district is innovative in many ways, certainly before I arrived here, and I'm trying to build upon that. But doing that, the science, technology, engineering, arts, and math STEAM, I've attempted to raise the awareness of STEAM with teachers and the leadership team. And again, there's many, many wonderful things that are occurring in this district, certainly Dr. Alvek gets a ton of credit as well as others, but I tried to build upon that, not come in with a brand-new, a whole bunch of new initiatives for teachers, so that's like, what, more stuff, different stuff? I tried to build upon what we're doing. But STEAM is certainly something very close to my heart that I think is important for our kids, their 21st century skills, the type of jobs, the careers that are available to them, preparation for college, you know, there's certainly a lot of jobs that are available and will become available in this area. And even something as far removed as it kind of sounds in a way, SpaceX and some of the private corporations, making some serious inroads on manned missions to Mars, and I think back of the number of people that became interested in becoming, you know, an astronaut or NASA from when the Apollo missions were going on and landing men on the moon, and then it went to the space shuttle, men and women, and International Space Station, so that, in addition to biotech, there's so many different things, and this area between New York, Philadelphia, and Washington, it's exploding with what's occurring. University of Penn and Drexel, they're just building more and more buildings in there to address some of these areas. So, I think it's very important that we expose our kids to this, and we create those pathways for them. Data, I think a lot of people in the district will now say that, they'll know, oh, yeah, yeah, he's all about data, I know, he's all about data. I think that's important for accountability, for measuring effectiveness. We say we're doing something, that's great, it's having an effect, how do we know? Where's the evidence? So, I'm promoting and I'm modeling the use of data to inform instruction and learning. We have a new data software system called Performance Matters, which we're just getting up and running, which houses a lot of our student academic data, and I'm really looking forward to using that in future reports to the Board of Ed, to be able to quickly compile that data, and as well as teachers and the leadership team using that data to know where the gaps are in instruction and learning, and really drill down and look at it and examine the programs, and can we offer better services with that. This one is for Ms. Armentio, Google Drive, it's your favorite, but that's, you know, part of that is to increase collaboration and access to information, shared documents, you know, we can work as a team, whether it's the board or the leadership team or teachers, we can share information 24/7, anywhere, anyplace, or any time, anyplace, if you will, and work on this, you know, and have a place that's housed, that data's housed. If you're not near your computer at work, oh, it's my local drive, don't worry about it, pull your phone out, you have access to Google Drive, you have your mobile device, wherever you are, you have access to that. So, that's something that we're using more of and hoping to continue use of that, there's a lot of different applications with that, Google Classroom, I can't think of some of the names, there's another one, I just, well.
Google Docs, Google Sheets.
Google Docs, Google Sheets, thank you, yeah, and all the other, thank you, and other things in there, there's one, oh, Google Analytics, that's what I was trying to think of. So, we're looking to use that platform even more and more, and it's free, makes it kind of nice. I'm calling it a restructuring of the leadership team and central office team, something that I think I did back in the summer, I know that there was administrative council and different things, so just a little more, I think it's a little more inclusive, having supervisors and principals and together, and we have a central office team that also meets, not every week, you know, we don't want to waste anyone's time, but on an as-needed basis. And certainly collaboration with Mr. Gorski and Dr. Alvek to present a comprehensive budget that addresses student needs in a fiscally responsible manner. There is another document that I gave that I also have that I'm not going to go through, but I asked that that addresses, it's actually in an action plan format, so it's the three goals with the timeline, the staff, the resources, and the very last column is the end-of-year status. So, you can look through each of the activities for each of those goals to see evidence of whether it's complete or in progress. Okay? Thank you. Do you want to use the handheld mic again?
Yeah.
I knew you could do it.
Can we switch over to the other, the goal setting?
I think what I'll do, I have packets that support both of the presentations this evening, and when I conclude, I'll pass those out. Both packets have a lot of information, it's good reading, it's good reference materials. When I refer to the title, Title 18A, Title 6A, the verbiage right out of the title is included in the packet, so it gives you a point of reference, gives you samples, but it doesn't really, the presentation is up on the screen, so, okay. Now, goal setting. And we'll cover a little bit about the generalities of goal setting, why would you goal set it? Plan is a four-letter word. We need a plan for everything that we do. A goal, the first thing, you want to know where you're going to go. Even when you go into MapQuest, right, it says where you're starting from, where are you going? Got to know two things, where am I and where am I going? So, next slide. Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Let's see. What did I just do? I hit the wrong button, see?
There we go, it's back up.
Now, I want to go back one, so I'm going to, which.
Might be east-west on the.
Is it east-west?
Might be east-west.
Okay, all right. We have a vision, and I know that Monroe Township has a vision, a very adequate one that's up on the website.
Yes.
The ability to see and create the future education you want for your children. Okay, next slide. Goals set the foundation for effective policy development. If you want to know where you're going to go, you're going to need to know the policies that you'll need to support that journey. Optimizing resource allocation, making the best out of the resources that you have. We're all working with limited resources, so you want to optimize that. With a goal, you can do that. There's no wasted motion. Program planning, there's that word again, there's that four-letter word, plan, program plan. Your CSA evaluation, your goals help you with that, help you, help your super. Effective communication, it's a method where you can address specific issues, and you address them in a logical, organized fashion. Accountability, you're held accountable. You've set goals, you're going to work towards those goals, you want to meet those goals. And if you didn't, you can explain, why didn't I, but you knew where you wanted to be. And continuous improvement, I made reference to that when I was talking about the evaluations, this continual process improvement, continual improvement in your organization, you'll want that. And in today's world, that is so critical. Okay? There it is. Continuous improvement, it's assistance approach. And I don't have to read it to you, no, it's fine, it's good. Governance cycle, if they ever make it big enough for me. We've done this cycle, this is the same cycle that we addressed with the evaluation, and you notice, the reason that these briefings overlap is because they really should be integrated. The whole process is the evaluation, the goal-setting, the action plan, the reporting out, and then we go around the circle again, so they're all interrelated. Okay. Data sources, I love data. Data is just, and it's coming so fast and furious now, that it's very, very difficult to manage. I come out of a world of configuration management. Managing data, very, very tough, and you want it to be meaningful data, and you want it to work for you. It measures something, let it measure. And I, again, I don't have to read them to you, your school performance reports, proprietary assessments, enrollment projections, and I heard a little bit about enrollment projections, even had the word referendum attached to it, so, you know, it's very critical, data is critical. You're going to watch your graduation rates, et cetera, okay? And then I have more data sources. Interesting, interesting, those data sources. Okay. Core benchmark standards, we want standards, okay? Those standards give us a foundation, and it's to build on, we can build our goals off of that foundation. We have curriculum, we have instruction, assessment, culture, student support, professional development, and efficiency in organization. I wonder why they leave that one last? I think that one should be first.
Okay.
Okay, next slide. The turnaround principles, these are national principles, leadership, these are. These are things that help you turn around and help you achieve and help that continual process improvement. Leadership, number one. Number one, it starts at the top. School climate and culture. Effective instruction, curriculum and assessment, effective staffing practices, effective use of data. Data, again, data. And use of time. Used to say, I don't know if they still say it, "Time is money." Time is certainly money. And you know something? We never, ever, ever have enough time. We don't have enough time to get done what we need to get done. We run out of it all the time. So. An effective family and community engagement. How critical is that in the world of education? Community and family engagement. Okay. Goal development. Again, this is a repeat slide. You've seen this slide before. District goals, board goals. That's okay. The district goal development, we're going to consider it. And I want you to think about tonight, because tonight, what we can do, and I'm going to leave that up to the board, we can brainstorm a little bit, okay? And then we can walk about district goals, board goals. And then I'll give you a report of your activities this evening, and then we walk away, and you think about this, and you add to it and subtract from it, and then we come back together again to come up with final goals. We cannot finalize them tonight because we have not yet done our evaluations. Vision for the district. You know, you might want to tweak that vision. You might want to add something to it or not. Have to take a look at it. The mission statement, and you do have a strategic plan.
You just did an update last month, I think.
You know, I have the link in one of the slides for the strategic plan, and I pulled it from the website, so...
I believe the updated report is on the website.
Okay.
The one we just did in March or April, I think it was.
Okay, so hopefully it's the current one. But again, data, whatever data is in front of you, and you've got quite a bit of data this evening, and your previous goals, you look at last year's goals. Where are you? Do you need to continue that goal? You may need to. And achieved and in progress. And some goals are going to, obviously, your strategic plan. That stretches over five years. Those are your high-level goals. And then each year, you revisit that strategic plan, because you guys have one, and you work off that strategic plan for district goals. Okay? Essential questions for district goals. What should our focus be for the coming year that will most dramatically impact student learning? It's, you know, that's pretty heavy consideration, and you have quite a few things on the plate that are coming up for the coming year that you're going to need to consider. So what should our time, talent, and resources be aligned to to ensure our students are all these great things? And that's what we want for the students. I mean, that's what it's all about. It's not about us, it's about them. How's our educational program meeting the learning needs of students? I think that that's something that you probably ask each other at every board meeting. Student achievement is number one. What does our data identify as an improvement focus? Is there an area that really needs work? Maybe attendance, maybe, I don't know, maybe anything. But your data will give you the information necessary. What input suggests a needed improvement in core areas? I'm not sure I'd follow that question, but okay. How will our financial resources and budget align and support student achievement plans and priorities? And that's, you know, that's something that we struggle with all the time. Every board is struggling with that, and it's getting worse each year, each year. Okay? That look familiar? Okay. Now, at this point, what I have here is your mission statement, whether you wanted to think about, whether you want to do any modifications to your mission statement. I think it's something that we can certainly revisit when we get back together, you know, but it's kind of homework that we stop. And that's why we're doing this this evening while we're running through the briefing, to get you focused back on mission statement and goals, and what goals did you have last year? We can go on to the next slide. There's your strategic, those are the very, very high-level goals in the strategic plan. And you can see that link actually takes you to the actual strategic plan, which is up on your site. But focusing on those goals, you can pop to the next slide. Those are your previous year's goals, which you've just gotten a report out on. I think I pulled those correctly. Next. Okay. And then these slides, you talk about your strengths and those areas that you might want to show some extra work. You've got strengths, and I don't like the word weakness. I'll say challenges, better. What are we working on? What requires board focus? What requires district focus? Focus areas based on greatest district needs, and I think it's sounding like space with everything that's coming in. I have to tell you, this is one of the first times that I've been up in this area, and my goodness, the growth is incredible up here. It really is. Very surprised. But, okay. That's a blank sheet. Once we fill in that blank chart, then these are the steps, you can go back, these are the steps, the board is going to adopt those. Your soup is going to take those goals, go off and develop action plans with the administrative team. Board's going to review those action plans, and then you'll establish dates for frequent progress reports from your superintendent. Okay. Now, these are your previous year's board goals. Okay, remember, the board goals are for your operation, your performance. What would you like to see done differently, better? How would you like to improve board governance? Communication piece? I see 100% participation. You know, that's, 100% participation in anything is really, that's a good thing, because you are a team, and you need all of the members of the team, all the cogs in the wheel have to be working. Professional development. Is this the board in governing skills? Board self avail? What does the board self avail? You know, that document, if you take a little time with it, that document can be very telling, because each and every member is independently completing it and providing comments, so that you know the areas that you need to work. And if you know the areas that you need to work, it becomes easier. If you have problem areas, it becomes easier to solve them if you know what they are. And professional development needed by the board in support of district goals. Sometimes, I have a district that I actually was covering for one of the other field service reps, where the board actually receives professional development from the administrative team. They do finance, they do curriculum, they just did one of the assessment tools, iReady. They did the iReady presentation, and it's very good, because then you get closer to the information. You begin to understand that information better. Next. Oh, another blank chart. And the same thing happens, okay? Same thing happens with your board goals. Okay, now, your wishes, Mr. Ryback.
Thank you. I think just, almost right now is adhering to a timeline for the superintendent's avail, just recapping what we've been doing. I think that's important to do right now. So early next week, I think we'll be notified that we're ready to engage ourselves in the superintendent's avail. Okay. Over the summer, I think we can schedule a day, I think during the day, during the week, if I'm not mistaken, I think that was most popular with the board last year, to work on district and board goals, finalize district and board goals. And, you know, you're showing us things that we can obviously look at and think about, so we have some time for doing that. I don't know if anybody else has any questions or comments. Right now, I think foremost is that timeline and getting it done. I'd rather do it step-by-step.
And getting the board self avail completed as well?
Yes, of course.
So we can have both, I'm sorry, we can have both of those documents. The CSA documents, you absolutely must have.
You better talk into the microphone, of course.
I'm sorry.
The CSA absolutely must be completed, but the board self avail really should be completed when we get together to do the goals, because then we can do all of the goals in the same session. And by the way, didn't they relate to one another? You know, you may want to consider, I hear referendum, so that's something that you may want to consider, training. That's quite an undertaking.
Okay. Does any board member have a question for Ms. Gassman? You have any comments, final comments for us?
I don't. It's been very enjoyable.
Well, I'd like to thank you for...
Very quiet.
Being here today. For once, yes, we usually aren't so quiet. Taking it all in.
You have my card. I'm going to pass out the booklets, the sheets. You have my card. If you have any questions, comments, concerns at all, just call. Like I say, we're there 24/7.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we could move on now to other board businesses. Any board member have an issue to raise? Question? I do. I'd like to bring up something. Over the past week or so, we've been receiving anonymous written letters and emails concerning our boys' basketball program. And obviously, I'm guessing, comes from a parent, but of course, I don't know for sure because we don't have a name. These letters and emails have addressed some concerns about the program, and I just would like everyone to know that those concerns are being addressed by the athletic director and the high school principal. And in addition, I also would like to mention that Dr. Kosak has attempted to reach out to the person or persons writing these letters and encourage them to meet with Mr. Byer personally to address these concerns. Dr. Kosak, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, there's a possibility that the emails, I just got this information a little before the board meeting, it's a possibility that the emails aren't even coming from a parent. So they're anonymous. There are anonymous letters that have been sent, there are emails that just say, "Concerned parent at whatever." And as Mr. Ryback has stated, you know, we have addressed it. I have talked to the high school principal and our athletic director, and there's no wrongdoing that the program, you know, is, there's anything going wrong, but it's more references to the way the program ran previously. So, you know, the best way to approach that is for the people to, whoever is writing these emails and letters, is to stop sending them to the board and follow the chain of command, go to the coach, go to the athletic director, sit down and say, "We have some concerns that we'd like to be addressed, and we'd be more than happy to address them." The concerns that have been in, have been indicated in the emails and letters, I've certainly brought to the attention of the athletic director and high school principal, and they are in the process of seeing how, you know, we can address some of the concerns, because, you know, we want to always continuously improve.
Thank you. Any questions?
Kathy, go ahead. No, go ahead. You had it first.
Ms. Arminio.
Okay, I briefly read some of those letters also, and I, sort of two comments. One is regardless of the source of the letters, at this point, I think that the outline of concerns should at least be reviewed by the administration and looked at and maybe interviewed some of the people to see if there's any validity to them. Okay, that's one. The other thing is, I do think, and it's very, very sad to me, and I'm not saying it's something that is persistent or pervasive in Monroe, but I do think that if they are coming from a parent, that people are afraid of retribution, and that would be the biggest shame of all. If something's going wrong in our district, we should be open enough and mature enough to address it, and if people are afraid to come forward, that's, to me, is the worst possible shame that we could have as a district, that people would be fearful of going through the chain of command for retribution. So that's a leadership issue, and I know that, and I recognize Dr. Kosak, that you have strong leadership in that regard. So I think that even though we don't know who it is, retribution may be a real issue, maybe not. But again, I'm not casting aspersions on the district or anything else, but it is a human, it's human nature to be fearful, they're children, you know, and we all know that sometimes these things actually do happen. So I'd like to take this seriously.
Could I respond?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely, Ms. Arminio. And as I said, we have already, even though they're anonymous, we have looked at the concerns, and we are trying to address them. And with everything, it's a continuous improvement cycle. The fear of retribution, I mean, I've heard that so often, from kids, from adults, oh, I tell you who it is, you know, "I'm afraid my child won't get playing." I don't have any evidence of that occurring. I don't have that evidence of that ever occurring. But I really feel that unless people are willing to sit down and speak face-to-face, then it's just much easier to hear something than you, you can get more information than just in an email. So that's why I'm encouraging whoever's doing that to please step forward. They don't have to come to me, they don't have to come to the board, they can go right to the source, and we'd be more than happy to address any concerns, and there will be no retribution.
Absolutely.
Just a final thing, but it did say in one of the letters, and again, we don't know about the validity of the letters, but it did say in the letters that there have been attempts to go through the chain of command, and it seemed like that there was no satisfaction based on going through the chain of command. So I don't know if we have a record of other, you know, people going through the chain of command, if there's been notice of that. But again, you know, we could always take something seriously and then learn from it, and hopefully, you know, assuage any concerns that there may be any kind of retribution.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kala-Palowicz, did you want to say something?
Yeah, no, I just want to say that this is not the first time this has happened. We've had quite a few instances in this district where we've received anonymous letters, and the board always took the stance in the past that if it was anonymous and nobody would take credit for it, that we wouldn't deal with it other than to find out that the situation was or was not occurring. It's very hard to validate a letter that's coming from somebody anonymously, because you don't know who's sending it or why sending it. But most of the time, we found it's a personal issue that somebody has with the coach, "You're not playing my child, you're on the varsity team, but you're sitting." And we always had issues to where if there was an issue with the coach, we had the whole team here. So I do think while it's necessary to just make sure that there's nothing going on, that you have to take that anonymous letter where the grain is salt.
Points well taken. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, then we could move to the next public forum and not seeing anyone in the public. I think it'd be safe to say we could skip that to my stating that the next scheduled Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, June 15th at 7:00 here in the high school. And now, can I get a motion for adjournment?
No, moved.
A second.
Oh, that's usually Mr. Kalpandwitsch.
Did you second?
I'm happy to second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? I don't hear you. All in favor? Okay. Any opposed? I didn't think so? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.